Okay. We're still filing in a little bit. I know there's something.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
I think it's right there. No, next one. I think so.
Okay, we have an updated agenda coming around. All right, I think we're situated now. Go ahead and call this meeting to order and we will open with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Thank you for bearing with us as we get situated. We do have two agenda adjustments to make. First one is to bring 7.1. New business. Do you want to do 7.1 first? Yep. After we consider the minutes or before the minutes? Or should we do it? Before reports? All right, so we'll do 7.1 before 5. And then 7.7. Right after 7.1. Okay. Anything? No, no. To move 7.1 to before 5. And then 7.7 after 7.1. Correct. Okay. Just reminding myself. Okay. Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion that we put up for review and possibly a vote whether to keep or remove Policy JB.
Okay, so we have to have a motion to add the review to the review of Policy JB to the agenda?
I motion that we add.
Right, so we have to add it to the agenda. Do you have, and I know Scott seconded, do you have a preference or a recommendation on where you would like to add that? And then we will present it for discussion and vote.
I have no preference.
Okay. 7 point, yes, sir, how's it going, Katie?
7.10.
7.10, okay. So you have a motion on the floor, seconded by Scott, to add to our agenda this evening, a discussion regarding the removal of Policy JB. And discussion.
Do we have copies of the policy? So we can look at it?
Yes, we can absolutely get you copies. I think I heard Marco saying that. Or if I just nominated you. Okay, okay. Yes, we will get copies in time for 7. Go ahead, Doug, thanks, Robbie. You're not on, sorry. I don't think anybody's on by default. There you go.
What is JB again? What is?
The title is transgender and gender expansive students.
Any further discussion regarding adding it to the agenda this evening? Go ahead, Robbie.
We'll get to discuss it again, right, when we get there?
Correct, so this is just the discussion on whether or not we want to add it to the agenda?
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, and then if it is added by the majority vote or two-thirds vote, then you will have the opportunity to discuss it. You're welcome.
Could you, Matt's motion was to discuss or review, is that what I'm hearing or is this to remove?
So first, he's, I'm sorry, did you say review or remove?
All of it.
Or is discuss from review?
Put it up for discussion and removal.
Removal, his base.
A vote for removal. Okay, so can I restate my?
Sorry, let's restate it.
I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda the removal of Policy JB.
Add it to.
Add it to 7.10.
Yes.
Sam, could you elaborate what you mean by publish and add? I reviewed Robert's rules today and I didn't see that, other than it just specifically said you can add them, make a motion at any point in time.
Yeah, we, the last time I've looked at that policy as well, our agenda adjustments to the agenda policy. Katie's looking at it right now, but you think, Sam? B E D B. So yes, right? Majority vote, yes, though I don't think we need to, and it has to be within the board's scope of responsibilities, is what Katie just read off, a majority of vote of the board members voting and present. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of adding 7.10, review of transgender and gender expansion students' policy JB for removal, adding that to our agenda this evening? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Pretty sure it passes. Okay, so we will add that 7.10. Oh.
I know it's after the fact, but just to clarify, that's, we just voted to allow for discussion of the removal.
Correct.
Removal will require another vote at that time.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Consideration of the minutes to approve 2.1, excuse me, to approve the minutes of April 30th, 2025 school board meeting.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? And I assume you're abstaining because you were not a school board member on that date. Okay.
She puts it in the Friday update at the end.
You're not on.
That's why it's like a 50, 60 page document.
Exactly, it's part of your packet, and it was posted as well on the agenda for the public.
Or you could review them.
Not until they're approved, though.
Facts.
Okay, 2.2, to approve the minutes of the May 14, 2025 public budget meeting. Thank you, Marco.
Second.
Discussion. Just make sure you pull that forward and make sure it's on.
I would just like to make a comment. I've been approached by some community members and they're concerned that why aren't we, why aren't some of the school board members voting at the public budget meeting? That's my only concern.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Matt? I don't know that it's necessary. I mean, you're free to, but I don't know that it's needed. Noted. Okay, any other discussion? Sorry, I lost my train of thought. All those in favor? Approval of the minutes? It's unanimous? Thank you. Petitions and communications this evening? I have nothing. Public comment? If we have anybody here from the public who would like to come up to the microphone? Seeing none, we will move on to, this is, we were doing 7.1, to authorize the superintendent to sign the Andrus Goggin County Sheriff's Office Agreement for Law Enforcement Services for the 2025-2026 school year.
So moved.
Seconded. I don't know if we have to take a vote, but hey.
Discussion.
So I invited Andrus Goggin County Sheriff Eric Sampson. He's here just, because I know there were questions about, you know, it being a full-time position, summer, so I thought he, yeah, it's the button, yeah, I know. And so I just wanted him to kind of give a brief overview of what his expectations are, and you saw it's called a school resource deputy. So we'll have to get used to that, but go ahead. Go ahead, Eric.
No, thank you, I also want to thank you for bumping me up on the agenda, because usually I'm the one that's bumped to the back and wait for executive session, so this is a treat. No, it is, we employ deputies, so in effect you'd be employing a deputy, but they're always referred to as SROs, because that's what everybody knows. It's been great working with Katie probably the past two years on the structure of this, and I know it's a little bit different than how it was structured before, and I'm sure that the complexities of it coming through the county were probably brought to your attention throughout. We have two current SROs, and I can't remember their RSU, MSD, you know, and whatever, but for Paul and mine, Mechanic Falls, Turner, Green and Leeds, and I would think you'd find they're successful programs. We like to involve the superintendent in the hiring process, they tend to know what they're looking for, we've been very fortunate with healthy applicant pools, and we would hope that the same would continue here. Where it's new and out of the gate, it's a little different, and we went through this two, three years ago in Turner, we advertise for the position, and sometimes hiring doesn't work out right, so advantage, work out right, so advantage you, we'd prorate the contract, and if it's, you know, the first week of August, well, you'd experience a six savings there. We usually have an office in the high schools, and we encourage to visit the grammar schools or wherever else is needed. They work either directly with the superintendent in some places, in some places it's the designee or the principals, and throughout the past year or two, we've started with our SROs explorer programs that have grown to get the younger kids involved. It's about forming relationships and having positive influences with the kids, and also, you know, or young adults in some cases, and also be there to support, you know, school initiatives and, again, positive behavior, so. I think SRO to administration learns each other quickly, and we're always there available to help if there is issues or, you know, to iron out the speed bumps, because every school's a little different. This system's a little unique, because you have Litchfield, Sabados and Wales, but you're closing schools, so we'd have to iron that all out, but after tonight, if you, moving forward, we'll probably post and advertise a position and we'll work with the superintendent's office to schedule interviews to have them involved in that process. So I don't know if you've had a chance to look through, if you have any questions, basically the deputy comes with all the resources that they would need, car, mobile terminal and equipment.
Any questions?
I sort of really quickly breezed through the contract, I didn't notice, but it's probably in there, I just missed it, but is there any sort of evaluation process, like on a regular basis, with the superintendent and a superior?
We do evaluations, and actually the individual, our SROs are assigned to the detective We do evaluations and actually the individual, our SROs are assigned to the detective sergeant who's available Monday through Friday, but we also find that communication usually runs through the chief deputy, the major, um, but things are carried out. As far as that goes, I think where the communication's always been pretty good and even in building this or what you were looking for, we like to incorporate their views. If somebody isn't working out in a position, that doesn't reflect well on us or the sustainability of the program. Um, so we're always willing to take things, um, into consideration, but there is, you know, a labor contract as well. And like with any job, you know, some people are appropriate to be cooks and some are appropriate to be cashiers. And, and it's the same thing in law enforcement. We'd like to think that we attract and recruit people that are appropriate for the positions. But we work with administration and really appreciate their input, um, into these things, but you kind of get the sense from the working knowledge. Because, um, we find that our SROs promote a lot of things that are brought to our attention, a lot of times through a, a quick email from the superintendent's office in support of it or appreciation. And then you kind of get a sense how much your SRO engages with the students and events like football games and things of that nature, so. Yeah, we would always look for it, um, and, and welcome it because like I said, it's not a successful program. And, you know, uh, a program that has stayed. Thank you, yeah.
Is there a probationary period or after year one, are they still on probation?
Yeah, um, so with new employees, there's a probationary period of six months. If an employee transfers positions, uh, the, like, so if we have an in-house employee, a patrolman that applies for it and we, we do have one that's interested, it's an area issue because of where he lives, uh, that we think, but he wants to be in our SRO. They're, they're put on an abbreviated probation, non-employment. And in law enforcement right now, if somebody goes to the police academy, by law, they're on probation for a year. And then a new hire, so if we hire somebody to, say we hire a former Lewiston Police Officer who already has the academy, when we hire them, there's a six-month probationary period. Um, when they transfer positions or get promoted, reassigned, there's a probationary period there, but it's abbreviated.
Is there any concern with the crossover with Kennebec County at all?
Uh, no, I actually a- approached him when this first came about, um, and we've talked about, some of the past experiences where you've had an SRO and there's been a county line. So, we would look to clarify those issues and, um, ensure that the engagement of families or students in Litchfield, um, is with coordination with the Kennebec County Sheriff's Office. Um, but I believe, yes, I know, we encourage Katie to shop every law enforcement organization around, because it was an interview process for her, I think. She got a feel for, you know, Sabados, the, you know, Andrus Goggin County and Kennebec County. And I, you know, there's a change of administration at Sabados, although I met the new proposed chief and he seems like a good guy. Uh, we had a great working relationship with Chief Baker, Sheriff Mason, uh, so, uh, we, we know that there needs to be more of an engagement there and, and probably more of an involvement, um, if issues arise in a Kennebec County town. Or with a student.
They'll respond anyway.
Oh, I, I, yeah, I've heard.
Yeah.
But no, I, I have no, no concerns with that. I mean, a- as a sheriff's office, w- we, we are constantly working with, uh, smaller towns that have departments and oftentimes backing up Lewiston, Auburn PD or happen to come across something. Uh, so I, I like to think we work collaboratively with many organizations, you know, to include state police, um, but that's a long difference as well.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, ready to take a vote? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you, I look forward to working with you guys. And, and congratulations again on your career achievements. I'll be in touch in the morning, if that's okay?
Yeah, oh yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are moving on to seven dot seven that we moved up, to approve a motion to elect John Springer as principal at Oak Hill High. Oak Hill High of Regional School Unit Number Four. Sorry, yeah, it just, that, that threw me off. As recommended by the superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion and, and John is here with us this evening, so. Go ahead, come on. Come on forward, um, we usually ask, I don't know, Diane, do you want to do your typical since you've earned that from?
Yeah. What brings you to Sabados and Litchfield and Wales?
Besides this evening's meeting, of course, but, um, in a general sense, uh, I'm just really excited to be here, so thank you. Kind of a really full circle moment for me. I took my first administrative job twenty years ago and at that time I was coaching at Oak Hill. And, uh, stopped coaching because I took an administrative job. And, uh, so a very full circle moment, um, that I'm very excited about. I guess I would also say I've been in Central Maine my whole life. I played games myself on these fields, my children played games on these fields. Two of my children played with students from Oak Hill in a co-op. Um, so we interacted with parents and, um, students as well. And then for me, it was just about looking at what the fit was for me and, and where I wanted to be, and so I did plenty of research on where I wanted to be and, and what kind of community I wanted to be involved with. And so, when I did that research and, um, there were many factors in looking at, you know, parents that want, you know, positive, um, school environment for their kids. Um, talked to people who had worked, um, with Marco and at the school and just looking for dedicated group of teachers who are excited to work with students and just provide the best opportunity for them. That's what I'm looking to do, that's the team I'm trying to be part of. Um, and so that's what I was looking for and then also just the stability of having Marco here, I think was really important to me. So, I think those are the things that I was looking for and, um, you know, I'm really excited about being close to school and present on campus in a, in an easier way also. So, like I said, I just, I'm, I'm really excited to work with staff that are really dedicated to being at a school, some of them for a very, very long time and, and really committed to the community, so really looking forward to it.
All right, thank you, anybody else? Okay, call for the vote, all those in favor? Unanimous, welcome.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming this evening. Okay, now we can hop back to five dot one. You don't have a report, though. Do you have something? Okay. You only have two more, two more meetings, right? So.
I know. Coming, it's coming fast and furious. So, some of the things with your, um, Happy Friday, um, note that I sent, I thought I'd highlight some of the things for the public. Um, you'll see on that you'll be voting for Jason Cohen to come back and be our P E teacher. And we're very excited about that. Been working on the transportation garage lease, which I know Doug is going to talk a little more about because we talked at the finance facility. But, um, Sheena, Samantha and I have been working hard around that lease proposal with Louis Willett for, um, garage. So, we're in the midst of really looking and examining, making sure that's a smart move. Um, we will come back to the board either on June eleventh or June twenty-eighth for authorizing to go into that lease. We're, we're going to shoot for June eleventh because then we can move the department if we go there, um, before the start of school. So, a lot of positives with that and more information to come. The, um, I shared that I had gone to Sabados Primary and, and helped do some tours before their meeting last week. Um, and, you know, there, I can tell that they're getting kind of, you know, maybe excited might be a strong word, but, you know, opportunity. This is an opportunity for Sabados to really think about what they're going to do with that building to help their community and I think people are really invested in looking at that space. Um, and we're going to do everything we can to support, um, that transition with them. We've been, obviously, you know, we, are we sending out positive vibes that the vote is going to pass on June tenth? We are and we're planning in case it doesn't, so that work is in, um, obviously in the works of being prepared for, um, that information. And working still hard on the SPS closure, um, around moving and moving parts. And as you know, I shared with you that, um, although it's not on this agenda, that Mark Taylor has resigned from his position. So, um, Samantha, myself, the team is really talking about how to divvy out some of that job responsibility, make sure there isn't any bumps with, with his resignation. Um, so, you know, I, as I shared with you in the Friday notes, appreciate Samantha's, um, work as he was out prior to this. To really hold down the fort and make sure everything is going as we predict it should be, so I appreciate that. So, lots going on, um, and school is not far off, uh, of closing. So, all the events that are going on, it's really fun to see the field trips and community assemblies and all the celebration of learning. And, you know, students are going from beautiful sunny days of joy to not going out to recess for a couple of days, so it's kind of an up and down. But the staff is doing an amazing job keeping up the energy as we go to the end of, of the school year.
Yes, I was very happy to go on the field trip when it was cold and rainy and cloudy. As I'm sure you guys all know. I was happy about that. Okay, thanks, Katie. So now we go on to our five dot two, financial report. And this is where we will be having some information from Doug, our Finance and Facilities Committee Chair.
Hi, so, uh, financial report got, um, abbreviated because we had a very full Finance and Facilities Committee meeting. We had a lot to squeeze into an hour for all the information, so. We mostly got the handout and I can give you the quick is that we're about um, eighty percent of the anticipated revenue for give or take for most of the year, which is pretty close. The concern is going to come up, it's on our agenda. One of the things that kind of came up was that, um, we may need to vote for, we will vote for a authorized issuance of, um, revenue just to make sure that we can kind of cover some of the costs with some of the, um, turbulence as far as federal and state funding. And that was kind of what came up a little bit with it. And I think we'll get into further discussion with that later on on the agenda. But right about where we should be, um, with our revenue and then same thing with, uh, expenditures. We were all pretty much about percents remaining, we're about that twenty percent-ish, which plays out. Like I said, it was very abbreviated going over all of the financials, trying to cover a lot of the other stuff, like we had visitors today.
Yeah, do you want to talk about Siemens because they still are here?
Yeah, I, because I noticed that I'm also on, I have the committee report at the, is number nine on the agenda, so I didn't know how much to really cover for this.
We want you to do the full report right now.
Oh, full report, oh, okay, well, I would have done the full.
Yeah, you don't get two shots at this, Doug.
This is it, Doug. We're throwing you off, I know, but we, because we're going to let Siemens go after you.
Okay, so, uh, we had, um, Siemens came in to, and we went over, um, in a previous meeting for the Finance and Facilities Committee, we, um, talked about trying to potentially pay off what we owe for the, um, third phase of the Siemens. Phase one, oh, that's phase one. Phase one. To pay off phase one. Okay. Because we owed a little bit on that still and that would allow us, um, to free up the, um, pellet boiler if we were looking to try to move that. So, that's where the discussion kind of got traction. It also allowed us to look into further improvements, taking that money that we would be putting in for the next. It, it's going to be up in four years. Three years, fall of two thousand twenty-eight, I think is what I wrote down. So, that was discussed. They also went over, um, performance, the performance contract project histories and for the last three phases that we have, um, done with them. Um, they've gone over the cost savings that we've had for each of those phases. There was a lot of information being, in a very short period of time. We got, so that was Siemens. So, I kind of covered it just with that. I was told that we could, if Siemens is available, if anybody from the board had a question for them. Yes, before I move on to the next part, should I open that up, I guess?
Sure. Any questions for, for Siemens? Came here tonight just for you. I don't know what to ask, so. I wasn't at Finance and Facilities.
This is like the hardest thing. They come in, they hit you with a whole bunch of presentations, you get like two seconds to digest it and then I have to reiterate it to the group with a full and comprehensive understanding while we just had our meeting, started within that hour.
And you're doing amazing, Doug.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, just make sure it's on. You, you got to be friends.
Is the five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-five, uh, dollars, is that the phase one amount that's left? And are we started phase two?
Yeah.
And how much do we owe on that one?
I wrote down the numbers. Do, I have to find my facility.
So, all, Nancy, just to be clear, all the phases have been done. We have phase one, phase two, phase three.
Okay.
So, now it's just main, paying, yeah, paying it back. Monitoring the savings.
So, what is the R O I we're seeing?
Yeah, so what we have in the bud, maybe Samantha, you need to come up and, and think. What, so in the budget, what is our payment to Siemens right now of the different phases? I think that'll help you, Nancy.
Sure, so the phase that's in question is a hundred and forty-four thousand dollar payment. So, what you're looking at with that payoff is paying off the last four years of that payment. So, that loan is due to mature in the fall of twenty twenty-eight. But the Facilities Committee had asked us to solicit a payoff quote for that oldest loan to see if we could free up those monies to do year-to-date projects with those monies to maintain our buildings going forward.
And what are we seeing for an R O I?
So, for all of those energy phase projects that we do, there is a measurement and verification process that Siemens does where they look at what they projected for us to have for energy savings. And if this is a better question for you to answer, just let me know. And then they measure what our actual energy savings are because the offset, the intent is that those projects are wrapped in together to realize some energy savings for the district. So, what we pay upfront capitally for the projects to happen, we see a return on investment by having energy savings. So, in the three phases that we've had, granted the third phase, this is the second year that we've had that project completed. So, we, we got an estimate for where we're at at this point in the year, but all of those have returned the energy savings that was projected or more.
But do we have a number?
I, I can get that number for you, I think Ava has that for you.
She has a spreadsheet.
All right, can you, yeah, you can hear me, right? Yes, all right. My name is Ava Trina, I work for Siemens, I'm on the Performance Contracting Energy Team. So, I did, this is kind of a rudimentary, um, calculation, it's just an Excel spreadsheet that I threw together, but taking those three contracts that Samantha was talking about, the three phases, we guarantee, so the first phase started in two thousand thirteen and to date you've saved one point eight and change million dollars. Um, phase two was a smaller project, um, there, there was a refinance, so most of the savings was generated through energy savings, which we could guarantee, but the refinancing savings, we could not, it was through the bank. So, energy savings alone to date, that project was signed in two thousand twenty, obviously two thousand twenty-five now, you're looking at about thirty-five thousand dollars in savings, that's for phase two. And then for phase three, calculating energy savings, that project was signed in two thousand twenty-two and you have realized over four hundred twenty thousand dollars. So, all in from the first phase in two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty-five with all three phases, you have far surpassed the guaranteed savings, which we proj- surpassed the guaranteed savings, which we projected to be 2.26 million dollars.
And did I hear you mention something about the pellet boiler? Because we're not using that any longer, right?
Exactly.
So we're looking at removing that and selling it or something?
That's been a discussion many a times, yeah, because we're.
Really, its value is its parts, because they don't make it anymore. So there's other folks that have it that are looking for parts. So it would probably be just a, we're not going to make a lot of money on it. It's more just moving it.
It's junking a car.
There you go, for its parts. There you go. So.
And so that isn't figured into, I'm not talking about the sale of it. I'm talking about there was not an assumption that we were using it and benefiting here. So there should have been a decrease somewhere here for not getting the financial benefits of using the pellet boiler, right?
Yes and no. So that was calculated in the energy savings, projected energy savings. I brought my team here with me. Lauren, if you want to come up and talk about the difference between pellet boiler and propane, it's between cents.
Just for clarity, where I'm going is I'm trying to understand, did we, did we make a bad decision when we did that?
No. No, because like I explained to the board earlier, and Rob knows, at the time it was put in, oil was, I'm saying, $5 a gallon. And then a few years later, it dropped to a point where it wasn't feasible to run it anymore, because the prices were close enough that, because the whole, the way it's engineered and all that, it's not made to be a primary source of heat anyway. It's a supplemental heat. So it got to the point where it wasn't effect, cost effective to run it.
We never actually ran it.
Oh, yeah. No, it ran three or four years.
Yeah. It was sitting in a crate.
No, that's where, that's how it came. That's, it's housed in that, in that storage container. You see, if you go out behind it, you'll see the piping goes into the building.
Self-contained.
Yes, yep. And there's a heated exchanger in the other boiler room, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other savings questions? I leave the technical stuff to Lauren. I'm more of a finance girl.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So go back to the Finance and Facilities. A major point that still seems like it's up for discussion is whether or not we should try to pay off the phase one Siemens loan to try to either reinvest that into more improvements for the schools or, and free up the ability to sell off things that we are kind of under that loan contract, if you will, like we have a lien on it. So that's what the $577,665 is.
Doug?
Yeah.
Sorry, can I interject a question here? What's our interest rate?
And to go along with that, Noel, Nicole, sorry, do we have to pay the interest? Or is the loan written so that we can save?
Prepayment penalties or prepaying interest, prepaid finance charges? What have we got going on here? Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Let me talk to this back to my.
Yeah.
Okay. So what you're looking for year, I'm going to jump into this one, the year-end projects. So like last year, the reason we're bringing it to you is last year through the Finance Facilities, we had this discussion, and the hot topic became that you bought a truck. Okay? So we're at the same place in the year where we are looking at where we're going to end, right? And a lot of savings comes from staff, that positions that were not filled, or there were shifts in what benefits they took. So as we look at where we stand right now, and we have June 30th coming up, Samantha has looked at, okay, what are those savings and in which lines and which cost centers? So one of the things you are approving tonight is the movement of the 5%. So remember, you can, out of each cost center, you can move 5% of that cost center that you're not expected to expend into another cost center, okay? So some of the items that we have identified are the loan payment has come up, because that's come up several times at Finance Facilities, is we cannot do anything with the wood pellet if we don't pay off the loan. So it's fine if you don't want to pay off the loan and keep paying the 145, just know that not until 2028 could we do something with the wood pellet.
Because it's collateral.
Correct. So then you have the moving costs. So we're looking at, you know, making sure we cover the moving costs, because it's going to be very important getting things from one school to the other school. And right now, we have contracted with REDS Moving Company for the week of the 23rd, 8th, 15th, yep, June 23rd. But there might be other things that are going to cause the move, like the kitchen. We talked about kitchen at the Finance Facility. So other things that we want to make sure we have enough funds there. Paving has come up, central office, we did get a quote to help with the paving. As many of you saw, there's, we've got a paving issue. That's $20,000. We're looking at fencing work at the high school, field and grounds work at the middle school, which you've heard about the grubs, right? So doing that. And then you see the parking lot repair and sealing. What we're hearing, if we don't seal these parking lots up, especially our high-use ones, the high school and the middle school, we're just going to be patchworking all the time and not really address the issue. The other thing we talked about is our van fleet. They are high-used, and we could use another van. But that, as was brought up at the Finance Facility, that's going to be a lightning rod, that somebody's seeing a new van. So we wanted to make sure, we got input from all of you about, here are the items we're looking at, but there may be other items. We're continuing to look as things come up, like furniture, for one thing. As we look at the moves, that forces people to looking at furniture, like cafeteria tables. We're in tear, we're already looking at Sabattis Primary Tables going to the high school, we're still investigating that. Kerry Ricker's going to have more population, so we're looking at those. But furniture needs come up. So that's another item. So we want to make sure that you understand, once again, like we do every single year, we look at what can we expend now from our savings in our budget, that we don't have to put in a following budget, and also watching fund balance and making sure we're also being, you know, careful with that. So we want, we want to be transparent on what the thoughts are going into the end of the year. And I don't know if Matt, you, Matt, you want to speak to? I see your hand going.
I had a question, but what would you like me to speak to?
Anything you want, your hand went up.
No, we got, we ran out of time in the, in the committee meeting, but I was going to ask, we had discussed the tennis court repair that was needed. Was that worked into the budget? Okay, that's what I thought.
Yes. Yeah, that was one of those items that wouldn't, we moved forward, and if the budget doesn't pass, we're not cutting that, because that's got to be done. It's not an option.
Should I go through the other stuff?
Sure.
That was the year-end, the stuff that Katie just covered was our year-end stuff. We went over the SPS closure updates, where we were looking at the phase one is the third week in June of moving out. And then phase, that should be all of the used items that we can actually put into other buildings, if anybody was curious about that. So third week of June, all the desks and classroom materials can go into the other schools by the end of the third week. And then phase two will start in July. Now would be more, more serious equipment, I guess I would call that. The bus depot lease update, I think, was important, because the current Sabattis facility isn't kind of working out too well, so we're looking at other options. And one of the other options was in Wales, and we got a rough draft for a lease for that that needs to be kind of reviewed and that kind of thing, if people are curious about that for, for, but the building and the facility seems like it would kind, it would really meet a lot of our needs, from my personal opinion, it seems like in general. The, what we, was thrown out there, but nobody really, I think we still need to see how the rough draft plays out. June 11th, we could authorize the lease if the rough draft gets kind of worked out and whatnot, and could start then. I guess that would open up the discussion on whether or not we needed harriman to do a feasibility study for this facility, for the central office to be turned into a, because that, a bus depot that kind of got brought up in the meeting. The new business was also that, I went over the April financial reports and then the revenue anticipation note. Again, that's just to try to hedge against any kind of uncertainty from federal funding or whatever that might shortchange our budget. And it won't really incur any other costs, other than maybe what the interest rate would be for that particular note. Again, that'll come up later. But, and then we did a pre-audit. That one was, that wasn't this one.
Starts next week.
FYI, that starts next week. That's all that was, that, we went real quick through that, I remember now. The fiscal, next year's fiscal audit, pre-audit starts next week. Okay. And we already went through all the end of years. I just want to make sure I covered all the other stuff.
Samantha had the mic.
And Nancy, in answer to your question, it's 3% interest, and we save just over $20,000 if we pay off with a quote that was given versus the four remaining payments.
Yeah, I don't, I, I get the fact that we're, we're going to save money paying off the loan, but I don't think it's worth an extra $400 and somewhat $1,000 to pay that off, when we can just keep making the regular $100 and somewhat $1,000 payment every year until 2028, and then do what we want with it. But we could take that extra $400,000 and put that back into a to-do list that we have, right, Sam?
It would have to be expended by June 30.
Well, that's what I mean. It would have to be, but we could increase what we need to do. I mean, we're looking at, you know, other things, and we could do it with that and just continue to make the payment. I guess the question would be, is the board all right with these projects coming out of this year's budget, right, Katie?
Yes.
So we're upfront, we're tell, you know, telling people, and if you don't want to see that happen, just, you know, let us know. But I basically think we could look at these items, and by the next meeting, we could lock in whether, you know, what they're really going to cost, and we could use that extra $400,000 instead of paying off the loan in other small projects.
Well, it's a tight timeline. That's why we have to act now, because we're down to six weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Right, six weeks? So if you don't, I mean, we can do everything we can try to do by June 30, then, then it's just going to roll into our undesignated fund balance. And then next year, you would decide, what are you going to do with the undesignated fund balance? And are you going to put more of that toward the budget next year, because you might have more in there? We don't know that yet.
Right.
Because it hasn't been audited. But yes. So if there's, I think what our feedback is, is there anything in here that you say we don't agree with that being done? Or is there something that you thought would be done that's not on the list, and we just, we have to move forward? So we're trying to get your input, but we got to act.
And just clarifying, the list that you're asking the board is the year-end projects options list.
Yeah. And the other things I mentioned. I mean, things are popping up all over the place, as you know, you know, sheds, we're having our sheds looked at, especially the Sabattis Primary Sheds, we're having those examined, can, are they, are they in condition to be lifted and moved? We're having somebody assess that. And they are good. They got cleared to be moved, which is awesome. But things are, obviously with the move, things start to bubble up that you don't, you don't think about.
So I, I was the one that brought up the question in our last finance meeting about the Siemens loan and the other loans that we have. And thank you, Sam, for getting that, bringing that together. It was just, the idea was to take a look at, you know, what, what avenues we could take to reduce, reduce our annual payments on things. And we have that number, and so, just, just to bring it forward for possibility discussion wise, another way to.
Right, you pay it, you pay it later, you pay it now?
Right.
Yes.
And, you know, pay it now, it frees up, you know, projects in the future, reduces, reduces costs. We keep paying it at a 3% interest rate, we expend the extra $20,000 in interest.
I was wondering if we didn't spend that money, and it goes into undesignated funds, and then we get cut significantly from federal funding, is that undesignated fund money available to use to bridge any gap we might have from a lack of federal funds?
You would have to go to vote for that. So you would, you would put a referendum question together and go to a vote to allow the use.
But it would be an option.
It would, yeah, it would be an option.
Yeah, I was going to say, like, is this all or nothing, or piecemeal? What's the?
Well, I think that probably the biggest question is the payment, the Siemens payment.
Yeah, I mean, that's the most significant, in all honesty, the rest isn't. I mean, the moving costs, that was already.
We have to do it, yeah.
Already accounted for in our discussions. So we knew that was coming. Yeah, well, if you want to give, just, thumbs up if you're looking to proceed with, or have Katie in Finance and Facilities proceed with paying off the Siemens loan? Thumbs up? No, don't, don't want to go forward that? All right.
I'm seeing no thumbs. I take as a no support.
No, I wouldn't say that. I think it needs a lot more deep dive discussion and looking at every, I mean, you mentioned a checklist and all these things that we want to do. I think it all needs to be looked at, in my opinion. It's never wise to carry debt. If you have the money, you pay it off.
So, so why, I just, I don't want to put you on the spot.
But that being said, I mean, you, you mentioned a laundry list of things that we would want to do, like a new van. I just, I would like to take a closer look at all those options and maybe.
So we're, we're on a deadline here.
I understand that. You mentioned that. But you're, again, you're backing us into a corner, giving very little information and time to digest any of this, so. It's a big, it's a big amount of money, it's a big step, it's a big, you know, half a million dollars is.
Absolutely.
To make a decision in 15, 20 minutes is not.
Well, it's just a consensus, so we're not going to make any decisions.
And we don't necessarily need your authorization to do it, but what we want to hear is your feedback around it. That's, that's what I'm asking, Scott. That, so you didn't put your, so in your comment, would that mean you would support the payment off of Siemens, or you, you wouldn't? And I know it's cutting close, but it would every year, because we don't know. You know what I'm saying? So a lot of these things have been mentioned before. These aren't, these items have come up. Not all the items, but many of the items have come up before. So, I mean, you either trust that we're, we make the decision, or you give feedback, and we'll, we'll listen to that feedback and debate what's the highest priority to help the district.
It was silent, so I was going to give a comment. Is personally being involved, kind of involved in that, is I think, this is kind of the same thing. It seems like something that would be good to keep in the back of our heads, and then we could know the payoff for next year. And if we start the year tomorrow, next year, or whatever, next school year, budget year, with that going forward, we could still potentially pay it off after we've made another year of payment, and just try to pay it off at the end of next year. But now have a year of kind of anticipating that or bouncing. But now have a year of kind of anticipating that, or bouncing that around. I guess personally, that's where I stand. That's why I don't support paying it completely off right now. But I also don't want to completely shelve the idea of not paying off what's left next budget year in June, or end of May, when we are at this point. If that, that would be my, that's some of the weekend thumbs.
Well, yeah, you can bring it up next year with the, with whatever board we have then. Teresa, you're, I'm going to, I just want to make one more question. Is that 3% fixed rate, Sam? Alright, and then, you know, the $20,000 savings goes down. Right. Okay.
What is...
I'm sorry, I saw Teresa first, can I, I didn't know.
I was just wondering, you know, how when you have credit cards and you want to pay off the high interest one first, or looking for a mortgage that's the lower interest rate, is the 3% a good rate for what we have right now, if we were to have to take out this loan?
Yeah. A lot of nods, Teresa, behind us. In front and behind.
Yeah, you're probably not going to get another 3%.
No.
We got a, we got a shaking head over there.
And Teresa, if you look at the RAN, the interest rate for the RAN, which is a very safe loan, is 5.85 right now, I believe is what you'll see.
That helps me.
Go ahead Diane.
What are the savings for paying it off?
Just over $20,000.
Plus the $144 a year, if you don't expend it right, and then it rolls over and we have that option that Nancy was talking about.
To, to sell the boiler?
No, where it would roll into the undesignated, and then we'd have to go to referendum.
So, if we paid it off and we're able to sell the boiler, how much will we get for that? We don't know.
No, parts.
It's for parts.
It'd be for parts.
And, and space. The area will be free where that boiler is.
Very true.
$20,000 is a lot of savings, from now till 2028.
Alright, go ahead Nancy, while he decides if he wants to speak or not.
So, from my perspective, I'm not against paying the loan off, but I'm also a little worried about what's going to play out. I don't have a good handle on what we have currently in undesignated funds, and what we have, I believe we have to save, what, three months of salary to pay, you know, for the, for the rest of the year?
Well, part of the RAN is going, is why you approve a RAN is for that, okay? That's a loan to help with the payments. The undesignated funds, you can hold right now up to 5%, no, 9%, 9%. You can hold 9% in your undesignated fund balance. And that is often used in, in case of emergencies, or something of that manner. That's why you carry it. But you also take out a RAN as a loan possibly, you don't ever have to take it if you don't need it, but it authorizes us to have money on hand. If, for example, the state shut down on July 1st, we'd need that backup.
So, previously, Robbie, maybe you can speak to this, because I can't remember all the details, but we used to have to keep the three months worth of salary. We didn't take a loan out of that, that was actually...
Right. We used to put some of salaries away.
Yeah.
And Sabatys had a check, and Wales gave us a check, and Litchfield gave us a check to pay for some of salaries. But, right now, we, for the, what, last six years, Sam, anyway, we've used the RAN. No, I mean, we haven't used it, but we've had it. Not for some of salaries, but just in case if revenue didn't come in like it should, that we weren't short, because the budget is just starting, and we're not getting that money from the towns, until usually, what, September or something?
It's due every month by the 17th, 20th, she corrects me every time, the 20th of the month. I mean, we haven't in recent years had towns in arrears, I think just recently with Sabatys, with their change in personnel, they were a little bit behind, but only a few days. So, we, we've been receiving the appropriations from the towns regularly.
But I'm just saying that the RAN is the safety net...
Yep.
That we, that we have as the district, just in case something happens.
Correct. So, what, what we discussed at Finance and Facilities is that this actually would have been the first year that I would have recommended not getting the RAN, with the exception of two variables that are kind of hanging out there right now, right? And that's the uncertainty around federal funds, dollars, which you mentioned Nancy. So, we haven't heard, that's been quiet recently, so we're hoping that those funding streams come in uninterrupted, and that we have similar grant awards that we've had in years past, and that's not a disruption. But the other variable is the people's veto, right? So, if that gets traction and that moves forward, and we don't receive state funding, if that makes it onto the November ballot with the appropriate number of signatures for people's veto, then that paralyzes our state funding, which is roughly half of our revenue stream. So, that's why in consultation with some other business managers, our banking partner, our auditors, like, we decided to bring it forward this year again and say, just, there's a couple of uncertainties that are big uncertainties, so we'd rather have that this year, like we have for nine or so years. As Robbie mentioned, we haven't used it, but it's, it's better to have it and not need it, than need it and be scrambling to secure that funding when everybody else is, every other municipality and school district, was the opinion.
And we are waiting here, our Title I allocation. We were notified by the state that they have received that, those dollar amounts, and then they will let us know what our dollar amounts. So, they're feeling optimistic that those title grants will be there for, for us. So, we'll know, that's, that should be out soon. Yeah.
So, then you were anticipating, if we said, yes, we're all on board with the Siemens loan being paid off, that you would have enough money to pay that off?
Mm-hmm.
But I assume we wouldn't have money to do any of these other things? Or do you think you have enough money to do some of those as well? I guess, what is the number we're looking at?
Well, right now, you see here, 695, 695,665. And we're also looking at furniture and so forth, so other items.
Right, but I mean, what is the, what is the pool of money that we have as available?
Do you want to talk about where you're, yeah. She'll give you the overview of the projection.
So, I think Nancy, you're talking about two different things. So, the undesignated fund balance that you're referring to is our audited fund balance, which last year was about 1.3 million. So, we use that, moving forward, to think about now our expenses and our revenues in this current fiscal year, right? So, we're positioned very well for our revenue side. We should come in close to or above budget. Katie and I just received yesterday a notice of some high cost out of district adjustment that we received that we didn't anticipate. So, sometimes things like that happen. Similar with expenses, sometimes you have things that you didn't anticipate, like a significant number of open positions throughout the year, so there are savings there. This year, we've had a very high frequency of our staff, almost 10% of our staff since April, I want to say, have been using unpaid time off. So, there's savings there as well. We had a little bit of health insurance savings with some different elective coverages during open enrollment. And then we also have had the SRO position that has been open, and we didn't fund that throughout the year. So, different things like that, and also we did very well in the heating season. We filled our tanks at the end of last fiscal year, and that allowed us to start the year with a full tank for heating, and then we also had less usage, I would say, this year than in years previous. So, just different little pockets like that, that didn't get fully expended, that lead to a year-end amount of money, which, again, we're trying to just bring this forward and say, looking at that list, does this seem like the things that we want to do with those monies? And bringing forward that Siemens payoff was at the request of the Finance and Facilities, trying to be good stewards, like Scott mentioned, if we don't have to carry that debt, then can we pay it off and use the opening that that debt leaves in the maintenance to, to do some deferred maintenance that we continue to hear from the public and from, you know, people in our maintenance department. I'm sure that if we had the funds, we would do these projects to maintain our schools.
So, just to clarify, you're saying that that $695,665 is money left, left in the budget this year? It's not the undesignated funds?
Yeah, correct, because we can't expend beyond what the voters approve, right? So, when the, the vote for the budget goes to referendum, that's what the taxpayers say, you are able to spend this money. So, we can't spend beyond that without going out and getting permission. So, those pockets of unspent funds that we just mentioned from things that we don't anticipate, right? Like, we'd like to have a fully staffed, fully, you know, fully staffed school system. If we have things like that, then it, it leaves pockets that we can look at at the end of the year, just like you would in your, your home budget, if there's something that comes up that, hey, this was under budget, or we decided we didn't need this, right? Then you adjust and you look at the needs currently, because remember, the budget planning starts back in December of that previous year. So, it's, it's shifting and being responsive to the needs as they come up.
Then in that case, I will give you a thumbs up.
I mean, this is a thoughtful process, as you know, you know, thinking through, how much have we designated to offset taxes for next year's budget has to be accounted, right? What else do we have to account for in the savings? And then, what are the projects that we need to get done, so that we're not deferring, continuing to defer? So, all that thought goes into it, and we want you to know what we're going to be expending that, those funds on, and is there anything alarming? And the Siemens would be a new thing that we haven't discussed. I think we've always known there's projects that are going to come up in June, that we can get done with the savings, which is awesome. But there's big items like the, the payoff for Siemens loan, you know, is a big one.
Go ahead Doug, and then I think we're going to take a final yea or nay on anything that's your, you know, really screaming and alarming, that you want to give feedback on, and then we'll move on.
I have an idea, but I can't tell if it's going to be a bad idea or a good idea, and I apologize if it doesn't...
If I go like this at you?
Yeah. The Siemens loan is a 3% interest rate for $577,000. Why don't we just not pay that off this year and hold that in our undesignated as backup instead of taking out the RAN at a 5.8% interest rate for $750,000? Aren't we cutting, aren't those both capable of having that same pool of money used for almost the same idea? It seems kind of, I guess, in my brain, it seems weird to want to pay off $600,000 and then take out a RAN for $750,000 at a higher interest rate than the $600,000 that we already would have in our coffers.
So, one thing I would say to that is, you are at risk of not receiving the vote to, to use those undesignated funds, right? That's the only, I would...
You have to have permission to do that.
Okay.
I mean, I would definitely open the, open it back up to you, Sam or Katie, if you have anything else to say to that, but I think that's, that's the biggest thing in that, I'm not saying that that's a con, right? Because the voters should be able to choose what they do, what we do with those funds. But, that would be one of the reasons why you might not want to pursue that. It's just, it, you have to go to referendum, you have to wait for the vote, you have to...
It could draw back to say it out loud, is people, teachers and staff could be not paid, or facilities could not be repaired, that kind of thing.
Yes, while we wait for the referendum, yes. Okay, go ahead Matt.
Sam, you might be able to answer this better. The, the RAN, is that, is that like, run like a line of credit? Is that how that works? We borrow from it when we need it, we pay it back in? Are we, and that's a zero balance right now that we borrowed against? So, we're not paying on that 5.85, but the Siemens, those funds have already been expended and are not available to us to use right now. So, we're just, we're just, it's like paying a car loan.
Okay.
Is the RAN fixed?
Like, we haven't had to use the RAN.
And the spotlight.
It's already...
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's more of like a safety net.
It's a safety net.
It's a backup plan for if, you know, state funds don't come through.
But we don't have to, we aren't actually taking it and then paying it back. Okay.
And once you do, you would use it again?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, anything else in this list that you really want us, you know, them to reconsider, or anything else you want them to consider? Any other questions, Katie, that you need to proceed?
That's it.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you. Is that, does that end your financial report?
I think it was, it was a lot. You can see we squeezed all that into it in an hour.
And we did that in an hour.
Yeah.
That was good, that was good.
Yeah, I think I, I think I covered everything. I apologize if this, I don't know, is Matt, Rob, is there anything that I, you feel I missed?
No.
Yeah, I think I covered everything.
Okay.
Oh, uh, the...
Nope, moving on, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. Were you kidding? I thought you were going to say something else. Anything else on that topic is no longer allowed. We're moving on. Directors' reports. Norma Jean Adet, Technology Director. Thank you for joining us this evening.
I don't have to do that twice, right?
Yes.
Yes, you have to say it all again verbatim.
I mean, none of us would be here for it, but...
Thank God.
We put you in here, Doug. You got a slide coming up. Just teasing. Good evening, everybody. Okay. Alright, so, why isn't it changing? We love technology tonight. Hold on.
I am, and it's being naughty.
It's changing on here, but not up there. I love it. Hold on. Alright, we'll start talking about tech in just a couple minutes. Um, totally disappeared, I love it. Alright, well, we'll do the verbal thing while I work on this one.
You want to go last? Why don't you go back?
Well, they don't have their slides either.
No, I didn't know if you had to fix something over there.
Oh, no, that's running totally separate.
Oh, okay.
That's okay. Alright, well. Hold on, hold on. We're going to try a different kind of stream here. No. Okay. Alright, so, just for technology, we're just going to talk about an end-of-year wrap-up while we think maybe if it's going to work or not, before I reboot the Apple TV here. Okay. Hold on. Don't you want to talk about something else, Katie, for a second? A break, a stretch break?
It's kind of nice.
I love it.
Because we could read the policy while...
There we go.
There you go, using your time wisely, reading ahead of time.
Alright Doug, go take your slide away now, you did good.
The slide that she said she added in there for you?
You know, sorry, dry sense of humor. Katie, do you have your MacBook?
I do, you want me to open it?
Can you, can you grab, can you grab it? I think it's just my MacBook being naughty now. Yes, please.
Okay.
Oh!
That's your machine is going.
Oh, wait. Is that you or me? That's me.
Screen mirroring.
Woo-hoo! Alright. My goodness. Now we're cooking, maybe. No, we're not. Alright, give me yours.
[coughing]
Katie, do you have your MacBook?
I do. You want me to open it?
Can you, can you grab, can you grab it? I think it's just my MacBook being naughty now. Yes.
Okay.
Oh!
That's true, the machine is going.
Oh, wait. Is that you or me? That's me.
Screen mirroring.
Woo-hoo! All right. My goodness. Now we're cooking, maybe. No, we're not. All right, give me yours. All right. Technology report. So we're getting into the end of the year and we have summer planning. So the tech team is really busy getting ready for everything that's happening this month with end of year activities and preparing for everything that's happening this summer. So we're working on prepping, prepping for summer school. So the high school starts on the 16th, which is actually the same day that we're moving a lot of our technology equipment out of primary school. So we're working on Sabates Primary closing. We're working on Libitoja and Carrickor classroom preparation. So there's some classrooms at Carrickor and Libitoja that may not have been equipped with a projector before. So we're getting all that equipment in now, getting it ready so we can get all those rooms ready for the teachers so they have everything they need and they're used to in their classroom currently, in their new classroom. We're working on Libitoja. The gym PA, of course, decided to die this year, so it's kind of taped together and barely working. And then we have an intercom project where we're taking the intercom system out of Sabates Primary. We're retrofitting it into Libitoja. Pretty much the same footprint, just shaped differently. And it saved us about $10,000 to do that. So we decided to go that path and, you know, fingers crossed. We have an E-rate project for Wi-Fi. So we'll be upgrading the Wi-Fi at Libitoja, Carrickor, and the middle school and here. And then we're also upgrading the telephone system at Oak Hill Middle School. And also, I forgot to add on here, we're actually upgrading the telephone system here to match, which leaves just the high school, which needs a little more wiring, which is why we're not doing it this year. We're giving technology support for staff transitions and classroom moves. So we've been down supporting Sabates Primary when we can and just making sure that they know that everything is in their classroom now. Like, if they have an Elmo now, they're going to have that same Elmo when they move into the new classroom. So we're just making them feel comfortable that everything that they have now, they will have when they get into the new classroom. We have student device collection for pre-K through eight and grade 12 coming up, starting, it begins this Friday, that we're starting to collect some of those devices, getting them shifted to their new schools, getting them prepped and getting the carts ready for movement from Sabates Primary over to Litchfield. We're prepping devices in classrooms, summer programming. So we're getting ready for session one and session two. So session one begins on the 16th, like I said. But the technology staff don't work full-time, so we're prepping for session two at the same time, which is when the middle school starts. So we have everything ready, even though we're not going to be in, in the in-between, so that everything is ready to go. And then we're already working on our fall readiness. And then I just wanted to do a thank you for the tech team, for them, all the hard work behind the scenes. So they've been working, they're a little bit stressed. We have a nice calendar that shows them where they need to be and what they're doing for the whole month of June, because it gets a little busy and we forget where we need to be. So that was kind of handy. And then I think you were invited, I think Cherie invited you to the Sabates Primary Surprise Day, which is a surprise. So that's why there's top secret over here. But the technology team was invited to come down and to participate in that surprise day. So we're just a little portion of it. But we'll have the kids in the gym all day. They'll be rotating through our centers, just like it was a UA class. And so we're going to be doing some flying orbs, we're going to do some stop motion and that type of stuff. But it's a surprise, so hopefully they're not watching because they're not supposed to know what's going on. But the techs are not skilled like teachers, so they're doing a little practicing. So we're practicing amongst ourselves, teaching ourselves and, you know, and trying to, you know, make it the best day possible. And we're hopefully, you know, even if it goes wrong, we'll do a lot of laughing and the kids will have a great time and it will give the teachers some time to pack or do what they need to do. So we're, we're just kind of keeping the kids busy for a little while and we'll have a lot of fun. And I think you were invited. Mrs. Whalen is going to come and help, which is great. But there's all kinds of other activities going on and a fun day for the kids. So if you're around, I think you should show up and, and hang out with the kids. Any questions for me now that the screen is going?
All right, thank you. So Sheena Jordan, Transportation Director. Are we skipping Justin?
Good evening, everybody. Countdown is on. I think we've got 11 days left, but nobody's counting.
I counted 10.
Oh, even better. Maybe I was counting today.
I didn't count today.
So we had Staff Appreciation Week earlier this month and it was super great. We included the drivers at the buildings, wherever it was most kind of convenient for everybody to hang out, have a good time. So Diane made these wonderful bus cookies here and there's Cliff enjoying his at our tailgate pizza party. And we also had a glow party. Everybody wore, well, not everybody, most everybody wore neon or their bright colors. And we also had goodies from the Italian bakeries. Shout out to the PETA for that. We gathered in the circle at the middle school, hung out on a nice day, had some sandwiches and some pastries. There we go. And then they also had some customized cookies made. I didn't get a picture with all of them, but they all look the same with just all of their names. We also included our subs with that. So they were grateful for those. We also had pajama party day, which was funny because a lot of the kids didn't know about this. And one of Ms. Tammy's kids asked her if she was running late that morning. So that was fun. But they were really, really grateful for it. It meant a lot to be able to provide them with things, even though they were little, to show our appreciation for them and include them. So I'm just going to touch a little bit on our new routing software. There's lots of information on it, but I just wanted to point out some highlights of the program. So we'll be able to send out notifications to parents' cellphones, just like you see there in the center of the screen. Pops up like a notification saying either the bus, you know, is late or the bus is early, the bus has a sub today, whatever it might be. It's all customizable so I can send out notifications to particular groups or runs. And it's not reliant on Power School syncing with this program. It's just relying on this program itself and the students that are attached to those runs. So it'll be super easy to be able to send out notifications just to the parents that it's pertaining to. I'm working on building summer runs in the program right now. So they were nice enough to give us access to the platform before our contract actually begins, which is July, July 1st. So I'll get to kind of test out the platform with our summer runs. So it's, I'm, I'm working on it now and it's incredibly easy. So there'll be lots of information to come on that. There'll be instructions sent to each family to create an account, download the app. All their students will be listed there, what runs they're attached to, so on and so forth. So lots of exciting things with that. And there's just a few pinpoints there to read about if you'd like, but there'll be more on that coming. Does anybody have any questions for me? Yes.
Is there a link to the app that a parent can use to find out where the bus is?
Yes. So there's two ways that parents can get notified where the bus is.
I'm just thinking it'd probably save you a lot of calls.
So parents have the ability to either, one, see exactly where the bus is, or two, get an ETA on when the bus is going to arrive. Now, since a lot of our drivers bring their buses home, we're going to just make it so the bus says it'll be there in 10 minutes or whatever, for an example. And they'll be able to see when their student is set to arrive home. We'll also be able to have in there where and what time a student got on and off the bus.
Sheena, can you, can the driver just simply sign out of something so that at the end of their shift, parents don't know where the bus is?
We definitely can do that. There's pros and cons to it. Having access to see where the bus is comes to my mind if there was an issue in a household where that parent wasn't allowed to be around that student anymore. That happens on a dime. You know what I mean? So that's my apprehension to that. But there is that ability.
Are there, there must be security failsafes and, like, the parent is the only one gaining access.
Yeah, so it'd be reliant on me going in and removing that parent to be able to see that. So we can set it up so it starts to activate, if you will, 10 minutes after the driver leaves their house, for example, and it shows up on the map or.
Do you know, I mean, I know you just started using it. Sorry. But is there a way you can do both? The ETA and the exact location depending on the user? So for instance, I know I would never have a need not to put that information out, so I want to see exactly where the bus is. Somebody else may not, may choose just to.
From my understanding, it's on our end on what we can allow parents to see. But I can definitely.
But is it individual parents or just blankets?
Blanket, from my understanding. Yep. Does anybody ever, uh, does anybody else have any other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Sheena. So now we're moving on to Justin Kelleher, Special Ed Director.
All right, so we were headed to the end of the school year and my first year in the position, I just wanted to quickly reflect on some of the department positives and strengths and also areas of focus for next year. So we definitely, as, you know, I noticed the high school principal candidate talked about, and it is, it is very true, we have a very student-centered and compassionate staff here in the district. We have good systems and structures in our middle and high school life skills programs right now. So that's another positive. We have experienced and supportive teaching staff and support staff, including our related service providers. And, you know, the IEP meetings I participate in and talk to folks about, our staff are very professional, student-focused, and really empathetic to parents in, in different types of situations. So that's another positive. The administrative team, I found them to be really responsive, creative, supportive, and, and have a lot of good ideas to support our special education students and programs. All right, so some areas for growth or opportunities. You know, we have a lot of new staff coming in that don't have experience at all in special education. And by a lot, I mean, you know, when, that folks we hired don't necessarily have experience in the field, it can be overwhelming. There's a lot of paperwork requirements, curriculum requirements they're just not familiar with. And we have a lot of teachers that are experienced, that are willing to take them under their wing, but I think we need to work on developing a more systematic way to approach that and make them feel supported. Looking at solidifying our behavior support programming, K through 12, from referral to exiting programs, whether that's exiting back into the mainstream classroom or exiting to maybe an out-of-district placement. I think the consolidation, you know, of Sabates and Carrickor is really going to help that because we've had our behavior support programs and our FLS programs sort of intertwined for, for quite a bit of time now and it's been a little bit of a challenge. So to further develop our elementary FLS program is another, another opportunity for growth. As I mentioned before, paperwork requirements are quite daunting. So we're really going to look at this summer, Tammy and I, you know, how we can make that easier for our special education teachers and streamline that as much as possible to take some things off their plate. And then lastly is just really being systematic about a professional development plan, focusing on literacy. Obviously, behavior management is a hot topic and then, again, the special ed paperwork requirements, so. That's what I kind of learned in my first year. Any questions? Yeah, what's up?
I know I should know. FLS, what does that stand for?
Yeah, sorry, we're acronym heavy. Functional Life Skills. Yep. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Jim Palmer, Adult Ed Director, Oak Hill High School Athletic Director.
Good evening. That's not working. It's just the arrow button, right? Not going. Oh, there we go. Okay. Yeah, let's just say the, for a timeframe there, other than the last couple of days, Mother Nature wasn't my friend. We had a lot of makeups with the rainouts, but we're, we're all caught up now. We're probably about four or five games left in the, on the schedule before we start playoffs. But at the end of April, I took a group of 16 athletes and eight coaches to the proactive coaching workshop. It's put on by the Mountain Valley Conference, the conference that we belong to. They talk about building team, positive team culture, leadership, and sportsmanship. So the gentleman comes from Kansas City. He speaks to college teams and professional teams and it was a very productive day. I plan to take that information that we received that day with those athletes and coaches and, and do a workshop of our own at, at Oak Hill. One of the things I looked at is possibly having him come to us to work with our coaches and athletes prior to our seasons next year. Looked at the cost, maybe something that boosters can help us out with and teams fundraising. So it wasn't as expensive as I thought it would be if we pair off with another school. That would cut the costs in half. You would do our school half a day and another school, another half a day. But I thought it was that, that productive to, to have him back. He, he does it every year and we had, we had a really good group. I brought a lot of younger athletes, just because I think those are the ones that are going to help change the culture right now at Oak Hill with athletics. Playoffs, as I mentioned, softball, baseball, girls across, boys across, girls tennis, track and field, those are all the things we offer in the spring. So softball's sitting kind of right in the middle of the pack. It looks like we'll probably host a prelim game for that. They've got a couple of big games coming up where they could jump and, and possibly get a bye, but we'll, we'll see what happens with that. Baseball, struggled a little bit this year. New coach, young team, so they're, they're not going to make the playoffs this year. Girls across, again, another young team that we co-op with, with St. Dom's. Young, when I say young, we have 14 freshmen. So that, that's pretty young. Some of them never have played lacrosse before, so. Boys across, we're sitting in the middle of the pack there. We're number four in the NPA, so we'll, if that sticks, we'll host a playoff game at our place. Girls tennis is complete. They did not make the playoffs. And track and field, we have a handful of students that are participating in that. They have their NVC championship tomorrow. I know we have a couple of athletes that are, have all, already qualified for the state meet. And then adult education, again, our graduation is June 3rd, 6:00 PM at Oak Hill High School. I think earlier this year I projected eight graduates. We just had our eighth graduate complete tonight. So, so we should have eight, which is what we had last year. And it's going to be right at the high school. It's going to be a small ceremony. Some years you get kids to come back and march and some years you don't. This is one of those years that we, we have very few coming back to participate in the ceremony. And I think that's due to a lot of our students completed early on. And when I called to see if they wanted to participate, they've moved to other places because of jobs, because they had, they do have a credential now, so they moved, moved to a different location. So that's it. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Jim. Okay, on to our old business this evening. To, 6.1, to approve the second reading of the following policies. IKF graduation requirements.
Second.
Discussion.
The only thing I want to add is going forward, like future years, I personally would like to see an increase to the, the hours for community service. When you think about 10 hour, 10 hours is like, it's not even a workday for me. I would just like to see an increase to that. I mean, I know it's on par with everybody else, but I'm hearing it's very easily achieved.
Okay. Anybody else? All is in favor? Unanimous. Okay, to approve the second reading of JICH, drug and alcohol use by students. Okay, to approve the second reading of JICH, drug and alcohol use by students.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. To approve the second reading of DKC, expense authorization and reimbursement.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. To approve the second reading of DJH, purchasing and contracting procurement staff code of conduct.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, call for the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Now I move on to seven dot two. This was the update that you guys received this evening with the updated agenda. To approve second. Yes. No, thank you, yeah, yeah. I was remembering what we were changing, and I was like, wait a minute, is it changed? And it's changed. Yes, to approve second, year probationary contract to continuing prof, continuing professional contract. See attached list, and the attached list is, Melissa Webber, Webster.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Seven dot three, to approve a motion that the entitled "Vote to authorize issuance of a $750,000 revenue anticipation note" be approved in form presented to this meeting that the secretary file an attested copy of the said vote with the minutes of said meeting.
Second.
Discussion. Which we kind of talked about earlier. This is the, what was, yeah, the RAM. All right, seeing that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Seven dot four, to authorize the finance committee chairperson to move no more than five percent between class centers to ensure that no class center is overdrawn.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Seven dot five, to approve authorization to apply for and accept grant monies. Providing acceptance will not result in the expenditures of RSU funds or expectation of continued staff additions.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Seven dot six, to approve the eighth grade class trip to Canterbury Lake Park on June sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion.
I'll just speak real quick because I have an eighth grader. The, the trip is fully funded. They raised all the money, so there's no out-of-pocket cost to the district. I still hear thunder.
All right. Any more discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Seven dot eight, to approve a motion to elect Jan Lavalley as principal at Libitozier School of Regional School Unit Number Four, as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Discussion. Yes, Jan?
The only thing I'd like to say is I wish our pool, we had been able to, to interview more than one candidate.
Okay, any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Congratulations, Jan. Thank you. Seven dot nine, to approve a motion to elect Jason Cohen, or Co- Cohen? Cohen? As a physical education teacher at Libitozier and Carrie Ricker Schools of Regional School Unit Number Four, as recommended by the superintendent.
So moved.
Discussion.
It'll be nice to have him back. So I hear.
I don't know him, so looking forward to it.
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Seven dot ten, to discuss the removal of transgender and gender expansion students policy JB. To approve a motion, thank you, yes. I need a motion and a second.
So moved. Seconded.
Sorry, Nancy, it's just, you correcting? Did I miss something?
No.
Oh, okay. No, I thought you said something, like I should have said something else. People correct me all the time. It's okay. It's okay. I welcome it. Okay, discussion. So Marco did bring them, did give them, hand them out to everybody, and.
I know, I was.
Doug's going to hand up first.
Okay.
I just want to, I'm, I'm, being on the policy committee, I feel like I have like a quick thing that could end a lot of discussion on it. Go ahead, Doug.
I just was going to ask if I could have like thirty more seconds to read.
Yeah.
Thirty more seconds? All right, let's do this.
Forty-five.
Stopwatch.
I meant like the last stage.
Let's, let's, yeah. If anybody needs to take a quick break, go ahead. Go ahead, take a quick break. If you need a quick break. I wasn't timing you, but how close are you?
I'm, I've got six or seven.
Okay. Okay, you're welcome. All right, go ahead, Scott.
So in the last personnel policy committee, we discussed this policy. And we, we reviewed, we reviewed it for legal reasons, but in my opinion, serving on the board at the time this was implemented, I believe it was sold under false pretenses. I believe it was sold to the board as a requirement that we had this under the law. However, Katie did go to the, to the lawyer and confirmed it is not a required policy. We do not have to have this policy. We, we as a board can choose just not to have it. That being said, if you look in the back of the policy, you'll see all the related policies that we do already have in place, which cover a lot of the stuff that's already in here. Bullying, harassing, online cyberbullying, all that stuff is covered within these policies. So I think that we should just remove it because it's slated to go in front of the committee again, but not until the beginning of school. If we remove it today, this is going to allow us to have time for the policy and personnel committee to address this right out of the gate when school starts next year and implement a new policy or establish some guidelines or some sort of, something for, for the administration and for staff to, to address some of the issues that may not be covered. But I feel like if we remove this tonight, the school year's almost over. This gives us a fresh start at the beginning of the school year so we can hit the ground running in the policy committee and get some new guidelines right out to you, or, or perhaps a new policy, but a replacement policy. And Katie also provided us with a, a sample policy from Drummond and Woodsum. It's ACAAA, if you guys want to look it up online. It's very similar. The one that we received, I understand, is, is, has been since revised. So make sure you're, you're currently looking at the newest version. If you do happen to look it up online and you're not looking at an old version. But yeah, that's, that's basically all I wanted to say, is that it's not, it's not a legal requirement that we have it.
You know what, I should have caught on this before. This has to be two readings. I don't believe, I think a removal still needs two readings, so probably should have read the first read. I just want people to know it'll come back on July, if, if it gets approved to remove. Maybe to remove it again, but I'd have to double check that. So while you guys are discussing.
So we can still get the policy.
But we're not reviewing to revise. We're reviewing for removal, so.
Right, I just want to look at if these two readings are removed, so I'll just double check that. Go ahead, Matt.
So I agree with Scott on the whole, it's not a legal requirement to have this. My concern, there's a few concerns I have with this policy. One of which is that this could actually open us up to legal issues in terms of safe spaces for, for students, like bathrooms and locker rooms. The other major issue that I have with this policy is the, is it section C, part two? Part two is, it's a parents' rights, sorry, it's a parents' rights issue. And in the event that a student and their parent or legal guardian do not agree with the regard, with regard to the student's gender identity or gender expansion, expression, sorry, the school shall abide by the wishes of the students with regard to their gender identity and gender expression while at school. And to me, that not only sows seeds of distrust between parents and, and the school system, but I can't think of any, any reason why anything regarding a, a parent's child information should be kept from the parent or legal guardian of that child. Those are just some of my concerns with, regarding this policy.
Yeah, I, I agree, Matt. I mean, that's a direct problem with the Fourteenth Amendment, I mean, the, the parents' rights clause of the Fourteenth Amendment.
Go ahead, Teresa.
Our last policy and personnel committee meeting, I believe we were going to address this at our next upcoming meeting and have Marco and Mal, our director of guidance, there to look at the revisions or discontinuance or removal and insurance that all the other policies, I guess, would cover, which they may very well. So that was on the agenda to be discussed with our new superintendent in place.
And I, I agree, I would, I mean, absolutely that was the plan. Like I stated, I just feel like, part of my reason for supporting seconding this is if we get rid of it now, because we don't need to have it, this just allows us to address it at the next meeting. We already know the direction we're going. We don't have a policy, we don't have guidelines, let's something, set something in place, starting the school year. Rather than starting the school year with something that potentially could change or be removed at the start of the year.
So when would that next policy and personnel meeting, I had it, I, I guess I thought it was going to be in June.
No, it's not until August.
Okay, that's helpful to know.
In my, in my opinion, I think it would be best to move to, remove this policy and if any changes need to be made to any associated policies like AC, ACAAA, ACAAR, or JIC to cover any lapses from this policy. That would be done in the August meeting meeting.
Well, definitely it's going to need two readings, from what I'm reading on our policies, on policy procedure.
What policy are you looking at?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at BG dash R. The following procedure shall be used to develop, adopt, review, revise, or delete. What you're really saying is delete, not, who knows. Board, the Board of Directors Policy Committee is charged with reviewing and recommending all new policies and policy changes to be considered by the board. Individual Board of Director members, Board of Director subcommittees, the superintendent members of the public may submit policy suggestions and concerns directly to the policy committee. Policy suggestions are received by the Board of Directors Chairman, or the superintendent will be forwarded to the policy committee. On the policy committee, together with the superintendent, so it's all about the policy committee.
Doesn't say anything about a vote, though.
Upon recommend, I'm just talking B. Upon recommendation by the policy committee, the first reading of a new policy vision or deletion of a policy. I'm just saying it's going to need two readings. If you're, if you're circumventing that, you're not going to bring it, the policy committee's not bringing this forward. You still need two readings to delete. Okay. Oh, go, go ahead, Robbie.
Yeah, it just, it sounds like to me we're putting the cart before the horse because in one breath Scott says he wants to do away with the policy, and in the next breath he wants to say that we're going to look at it and come up with a, with an alternative. Well, we already have the policy. The policy committee can choose to look at it at their next meeting and make any recommendations they want to the policy without killing it first. So I guess if it needs two readings anyway, you'd come back with the adopted, with the amended policy for the whole board to look at, and then we would vote on it for second reading.
The problem is, is that this policy is absolute trash.
Well, that's, that's your opinion.
No, it's not.
That's your opinion.
Rob, there are so many holes in this.
Well, fix them then. Fix them at the policy meeting.
Okay, we're, we're not going to yell at each other. I'm, I'm going to say that right now. We are not going to yell at each other.
They have an off, I have the floor. They have an opportunity to fix it at the policy committee and bring it to the board. And that's the procedure.
I agree. We're not going to yell at each other, though.
We're not looking to, we're not looking to do that. We're looking to remove and potentially replace, and maybe not even with a policy, but guidelines. We discussed that in our policy committee. But we wouldn't necessarily even need a policy because we already have policies that cover the majority of this stuff. We would just replace it with some guidelines to help administration and staff cope and deal with some of the things that may arise.
Go ahead. Sorry, I was looking down. I don't, go ahead, Nancy. Thank you, Doug.
Did I understand you correctly to say that this policy puts us at legal risk right now? So part of getting rid of the policy would be to prevent legal, potential legal ramifications?
In my opinion, yes. I mean, that's accurate. It was Matt's comment.
Yeah, that was my point, and it's, I'm, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer or attorney, but reading, reading the wording in, in some of the sections of this policy, I believe it, it can create situations where it can open the school up to lawsuits. And as I understand, the, the writing of this policy is not, is, it's not backed by the writers. They don't, they won't put their letterhead on. It's more of a, they presented it as a guideline, a policy, not illegal.
Yeah, I would share that. I mean, I'm not, again, I'm not a lawyer, but from what I know. I mean, I'm not, again, I'm not a lawyer, but from what I know, uh like as an example, section D, number three, names slash pronouns, students shall be addressed by school staff and other students by the name or pronoun corresponding to their gender identity asserted at school. Well, that becomes a First Amendment violation for the other student. And we haven't outlined any any guidelines like, so if a if a student decides to change gender and go by a different name, start of the year, I'm Tommy, middle of the year, I'm Tammy, we haven't outlined anything where, you know, I've been friends with this person since kindergarten, now all of a sudden I accidentally call them by their um given name. What is, what is the process, like what's going to happen to the student? What, are they gonna serve a detention? Are they gonna have to go through uh some sort of like DEI training? Like what is it that, we haven't even outlined that. But more importantly, you're violating the first student's rights by simply calling the person by their given name, right? Is that not allowed? But it clearly says that they they shall be addressed by school staff and by other students. You're forcing students and staff to do something that they're not legally obligated to do. That's just one example. I mean, I've got countless others. That's probably the the gentlest one, I could say, but I mean, um and and, you know, Matt said, mentioned safe spaces, I mean, this allows somebody, and again, there's no language that specifies, is the person having to go through a a transformation program with a physician or with a counselor? And if so, how long do they have to be on um on on drugs or gender drugs? I'm not sure, I can't think of the name, but there's no outline to when or how somebody may change a gender. So that being said, you could one day just decide to be, to change sexes and then use the facilities of the opposite sex. There's no, there's, there's nothing outlining any of that. And there is, there's at least one case that I know of where a female student, two female students were sexual abused in a female, in a girl's restroom by a biological male student. I mean, that, do we want to open ourselves up to that potential? I don't, I mean, not only, you know, constitutional rights, but, you know, there's some other legalities involved here, too.
This, there's a line in this policy regarding the restrooms, bathrooms, locker rooms, changing rooms. And the way it reads to me is that the biological male or female using the designated bathroom loses, if they object to sharing that space with someone who identifies differently, they are the ones that have to find, have to be placed in a private changing bathroom or locker room. So they they lose, they lose out on using their space. Yes, reverse discrimination, forced compliance.
I mean, here's another hole, C one, if you don't mind, C one, uh it says, the Regional School Union Board shall accept students' assertion of their gender identity, whether it is consent assertion of gender identity or any other evidence that the student's gender identity is sincerely held as part of their core identity. An educational institution is in no case should require medical or mental health records as proof of student's gender identity. That's so subjective, like it doesn't point us in the right direction to who makes this decision? Or is it one person? Is it, is it a group of people? Is that something that can change later? There's no, there's just no guidelines. This whole thing is so gray that there's just too many opportunities for things to happen. That's why I think it should be removed and replaced with something. This was, this came, when did we adopt this?
Twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty twenty-two, three years ago. So much has changed even in this subject in the last three years. There's, there's even stuff in here that's no longer correct. Uh for instance, the section five, D five, where it talks about the uh the MPA and how athletics are supposed to be addressed. Um in April of twenty twenty-four, the MPA actually changed their their policy and their stance on this, and they essentially left it up to the schools. So the school has, is supposed to decide whether or not this person can compete in the um in the category that they choose. And it, and it's the responsibility essentially, they don't want anything to do with it, so the responsibility then falls back to the school. But that's not how it's written in this policy. This policy says we have to follow the MPA, the MPA is saying, no, you have to follow what the school is. So there's contradictory information there, too.
I found, sorry, I found the line that I was looking for. It is under D uh four, it's restrooms, locker rooms, and other gender segregated facilities. Students shall be permitted to use restrooms, locker rooms, and changing facilities corresponding to the gender identity which the student asserts at school. The district will provide reasonable alternative facilities such as a separate stall or a staff facility in accordance with a student preference for greater privacy. A student shall not be required to use a separate non-communal facility over their objection.
And we were, when we were first adopting this policy, just a specific question I had for Superintendent Colton was related to this, and he said, we're converting all restrooms in every school to single use, so it's not gonna be changed. And we know that that's not the case.
Go ahead, Teresa.
The, we have to have a second reading in our next meeting. It'll be after the school year's over, right? It's the eleventh is our next meeting?
Yep.
So this wouldn't impact our students this year or the schools this school year?
Right, right.
I do want to note that the reference is incorrect. The Maine Human Rights Act is not twenty dash A. That is just the note I want to make.
Is that because it has been changed since twenty twenty-two?
No, it's Title One, not Title Twenty dash A. Yeah, it's Title One. Um it's also not a requirement of the Maine Human Rights Act. So those are my two notes. Um anybody else? Go ahead, Doug.
Yes.
Teresa mentioned that the um Policy Committee was gonna revisit this on the next committee meeting, Policy Committee meeting?
I think that, right, is that right, Scott?
Yeah, but it's not till August, so school.
Not till August, okay. Uh I guess I'm just curious what prompted it that we need, we wanted to add it to the agenda tonight and then have it removed tonight as opposed to waiting until August?
Uh to be honest with you, Doug, I've been, I've been, this has been on um on my mind going back to uh the beginning of this past school year when I found out that we had the policy. With everything we've had going on, with budget, with closing SPS, with the superintendent search and everything, I've been waiting for a better opportunity to do it, and now we're approaching the end of the school year, going into summer break. I did not know that it was being discussed in in the Policy Committee, uh but I still feel that this, we should not have this in our policies. And and every, from what I can, reading the other adjacent policies, most, if not all, of the issues would be covered under those other policies regarding bullying, cyberbullying, discrimination.
Okay, any? Are you gonna say something else, Doug? I was gonna say any further discussion? Go ahead, Teresa.
I guess in the Policy Committee, we were gonna look at the alternatives. Um and I guess I would feel better if, even if all of us presenting us with another example of another school who's not using a policy like this, that to make sure what we have outside of this piece um covers what we need to make sure we're covering. Since I wasn't on the board when this was put in place, and and I definitely see your issues with some of these items, especially with parents being taken out of the the mix.
So you're aware, I mean, there's many districts, including surrounding, like Lewiston has removed their policy.
JB?
So they have, they have the other version ACAAA, so, but again, you know, it's.
So there are other districts, um and not every school district in the state of Maine has this policy because it is not required. So.
And I see these discussions on like the news and it becomes controversial and it's covered by media and there's two very different sides. As just one person, I'd like to make sure I know all the information as a newer board member.
Yep, very good question. Okay, Doug?
I I agree with Teresa, with Teresa's sentiment, I guess, just to say that out loud, is that, um I think there's a lot of good points on both sides. I guess I just get kind of leery or I get hesitant and I want more than just fifteen minutes to think about something that removes things that are meant to help people, you know, I guess, to, with that sentiment. I don't know, I don't, I I understand both sides of the argument, I guess. And I, I, it is confirmed that we have a second reading at least before it's officially gone, just to provide more time.
So is this considered our first discussion?
This would be a first reading.
So is there anything else we need to cover at this point? Because second readings tend to be.
I don't, that's what I was just gonna ask, if there's anything else, because, yeah, Lewiston still has JB, right? Yeah, they do. I did recently hear of another district, though, that did.
MSAD twenty.
Was it nineteen? Are she nineteen?
There's more than, there's several.
I don't know. Unlike the sheriff, I I don't know.
But again, not everybody even had it to begin with.
Correct, not every district had it to begin with.
There was only seventy-ish throughout the whole state.
Yep, all right, so I'm gonna call for the vote then unless there's any additional discussion that hasn't been already raised, any new discussion, any new comments. Go ahead, Robbie.
Does this open us up, Katie, for a, for a suit on the other end, somebody denied services?
I mean, remember, law dictates, so without a policy, we must follow the law. So, and that's what I shared at the policy meeting, is the guidelines still have to oversee, whether our personal viewpoints are one thing, and then there's the law is the other thing. So if we um are meeting, you know, it's it's individual basis, we meet with families, we discuss their needs, um we make plans for them, just like we do with all of our students. So having a policy, not having a policy, we have to follow the law, and so we would.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor to remove policy transgender and gender expansive students, JB? All those in favor? And all those opposed?
I don't know, I don't know if I'm opposed, I'm not opposed to the.
Opposed to the removal, it's to the removal of the policy, like that, that.
I want a second reading.
So I think you would vote yes then until we get to the second.
Okay, that's difficult because I'm not sure of what, how you're saying it.
The removal would have to come back for a second reading. This is the first reading to remove.
To have it removed.
Do you vote tonight?
A no vote would mean we don't go forward and read it again.
Right, and that goes to the Policy Committee.
Okay, so can you redo it?
The majority have to vote in favor.
Okay, so this is, all those in favor for a first reading, which would then advance the policy removal decision vote to a second reading. All those in favor, raise your hands.
Thank you.
You're welcome, that was a very good question. I think that was unanimous.
Oh, the winds picked up.
Oh. That, that's, it's very confusing, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad you asked. Yes. Yeah, just the motion of the second she was capturing, okay. Sorry, I just gotta find my agenda. Okay, now we're onto eight other business, I have nothing. Do you have anything, anybody? Okay, Doug, for finance emphasis, I'm just kidding.
Look at the face.
Um Diane, CAI Technology Committee?
All right, we met with Shelley um early because she was going to graduation exercises for her daughter at Edward Little. Um we talked about a new social studies curriculum for Oak Hill Middle School for sixth, seventh, and eighth. Um it is a teacher-led kind of curriculum, uh it takes care of history, geography, civics, and economics. Um they are going to, and that, she met with the teachers and um what we're using now is kind of a mix of what teachers have collected through the years, so we really had no set curriculum. Um so she met with the teachers and they explored different um curriculums for social studies, um and this one, uh the teachers really loved, and so she presented that to us tonight. And with funds from this past school year, she's able to buy enough hardcover books for um three, for, I guess, sixth, seventh, and eighth. And then um she's going to get the um, what are they called? Books that the kids can use and write in? Yeah, workbooks. Um and she said they were really great working with her for that. Um and then Norma Jean came and met with us and she gave us a tech update and she kind of gave us that up there. Um I also asked if she had um any information regarding end of the year activities for all the different schools, because I really couldn't find that on the site, but I would like to possibly attend some of these. So um this is Libby Tozier, Carrie Ricker, Sabatius Primary, Oak Hill Middle School, and the high school, they're all in a packet here, so you are more than, you know, if you want to come and get one of these, you can. And that was it.
All right, great, thank you. Any questions for Diane? Okay, board member comments? Diane?
Um first, I'd like to say happy retirement to Beth Pepper and Linda Fennell. Uh I got to work with Beth over at Carrie Ricker and um it was wonderful working with her. I know she went over to Oak Hill Middle School, my granddaughter had her, so it was awesome. Uh Linda Fennell was the janitor in the classroom that I was in at Carrie Ricker, so I wish her well as well. Um second, I went on a field trip to the Botanical Gardens in Um Bay Harbor, and um the only thing I'd like to say is we were rushed because the bus didn't get there to pick up the kids for the field trip. So this has happened to me in the past, being a teacher in this district, the bus didn't show up to pick us up. So I'd like us to develop some sort of a a check-in between teachers and bus drivers so we know we don't have to always be checking this, it would come to us directly. Third thing, uh we need to look into developing some sort of a system to review job performance and stipend positions. That's for the future. Uh and I'd like to say thank you to Katie and Sam for all the work being done to close SPS, because I know with Mark leaving, that leaves you to do all that work.
Thank you, Diane. Go ahead, Doug.
I had a shout out for all the field trips, too. I feel like I've gone on a field trip every week for the past like five weeks with, and I have to say that they've all been very well just orchestrated, um everybody really knows what they're doing, all the kids are great, it's like actually really rewarding to like see everybody. It's like actually really rewarding to like see everybody actually like learning and doing these things. And just the, the kids are great. I mean, in all the schools, it kind of, I don't know, kind of jealous sometimes with all the, you know, especially the younger grades are great. The, which ones, the, I feel like I should be a little more specific. The, um, forestry at the plantation, Smithfield Plantation. We went to two of those. The first one was for the salamanders and they read the stories. And the second one was the actual like forestry day with the different, um, groups. And I think the kids seemed like they really were paying attention and they really got into it. The groups were all really well done by all of the different volunteers that were there. What was the other one? Uh, what did, uh, Libby Tozier go do?
The Dew Haven.
Oh, yeah, dude, the, the zoo, that's where you were, yep. Nicole was at it too, yeah. That one was pretty good. I've never been there, so that was kind of exciting going to go see that. I've never, I didn't even know that existed, to be honest with you. I'm kind of glad about that. So yeah, it was, it was pretty good. It was, I'll shout out to all the teachers and all the staff, everybody that's involved in that. Diane reminded me of one more, oh, Mark. I just want to say I am going to miss Mark. It was kind of sad to hear about that and I understand life is crazy. But I feel like if Mark's watching this, I want him to know that I am going to miss him. I, I thought he brought a, a nice energy to the position and to the, this everything. So I'm going to miss that a lot.
Oh. Yeah, Mark, Mark definitely will be, will be missed. I haven't had a chance to talk with him, but I'm sorry for his loss. Wish him well. I do want to comment on, um.
A little closer.
Sorry.
Or turn.
Closer to me.
Oh, there you go.
Uh, I do want to comment on, um, why I may or may not abstain at certain times. I'm not speaking for everybody who does, but, uh, at the high school vote, the budget process is a, is a long and lengthy process. Um, and us as board members have several opportunities to vote on it. Um, obviously we, we take a vote to bring it to the high school, uh, meeting. We are up there as board members, but our vote there is really just as taxpayers and citizens of the town. And I guess I'm, my stance on it is I'm there to see how the voters are reacting to what we put together for them. So. That's that.
Okay, thank you. Teresa?
I want to thank all the staff, the parents and the students for all their hard work this year. Great job. And then we look forward to seeing you again next year. And I hope you have a great summer and all the people who are packing up, moving schools. We appreciate you, hope to see you back again next school year. Thanks for being a part of the RSU family.
Go ahead, Robbie.
Yeah, I'd like to second, uh, what Teresa said. I think sometimes, uh, our staff towards the end of the year are kind of burnt out. But I can tell you, never in a community do I hear a bad word about our staff. Uh, the majority of the people believe our staff are dedicated and trustworthy and really love our kids and want to help. And what you do is a calling. You can't, it's not just a job, no matter what anybody thinks at this time of year. Cause after a long year, it does feel like a job, but it is definitely a calling. And I would like to, you know, tell everybody that we appreciate what you do and how it's done. And, uh, yeah, it's a big move coming up, but I'm sure you are up to the task. So thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I'll go. Um, so thank you to Nancy. Nancy, um, I know that you did attend the May fourteenth. But we really didn't have a whole lot of time to thank you for rejoining and throwing your name in the hat or whatever, uh, George roped you into. Or my husband, so, uh, he, he said, hey, Nancy. So thank you for joining us again. And of course, thank you for, um, all the staff. Um, and you know, definitely Sam. I don't think we could do this without you. I mean, everybody's replaceable. I'm not going to say that you're not, but it's not easy to replace somebody like you. Um, and I don't want to have to, so don't take that as, uh, kicking me out. But everybody's replaceable, right? Nobody wants to have to be replaced and nobody wants to replace anybody. Um, you know, thank you to all the administrators, teachers, staff. Kids are, you know, they're, um, I won't talk about mine. Kids general are, you know, waiting for the end of the year. Mine are, you know, being their fun little selves, but, um, the staff is handling it just well. Um, and thank you to Sheena, uh, and, and a bus driver when I didn't have daycare and didn't know. Cause I told you guys, I will forget things like that. Um, and, uh, there was, uh, all worked out wonderfully. Um, and I, I do want to, you know, as we are nearing the end of our twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year and our regular board meeting schedule, which we have two, two regulars left. Um, I definitely want to thank each and every one of you, um, sitting around this circle, um, as well as Christie, who is not able to be with us this evening, um, for all of your time and commitment and dedication. You know, we come here every other Wednesday, but it's not, that is not your only time that you are focusing, um, as a school board member. We've had many workshops. We've been together a lot this year. So I, I, you know, thank you for that. Um, I also, again, thank you for your vote of confidence in having me be your school, school board chair this year. Uh, it's been an experience, been very interesting, um, to say the least. And, um, you know, with what, you know, we talked about tonight and, um, some things that have gone on, uh, in the, the community and social media recently. You know, I do want to take note here that, um, we do have a code of conduct, right? So I want to make sure that we all understand that our code of conduct is, is there for a reason. So if anybody encounter, if you're encountering anybody's, you know, community voices and concerns, based on the topics, the decisions that occurred here, um, we want you to, remind you of that. So, you know, there, there are some very contentious topics, I think. And that's the controversial is the word Robbie used tonight, I think, right? Especially with what was, um, discussed this evening. I want to make sure that we remember that we are one board. You are free to have your own rights, your own opinions and ideas. But once a decision is made here, the decision is of the board. You are part of that decision, whether it's one that you voted for or against. Right? So we want to make sure that that is always in the forefront of our minds. And, you know, that's really how we, how we conduct ourselves in public is, 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 um, a role model. I mean, it's the leadership aspect. Um, you already took that leadership role by running for the board. Um, Teresa's running again. Uh, I think that's the only seat up this year in, in Litchfield in June, right? And I don't think there's any in Wales. Right? And then Sabatys will have one, one in, in November. Um, you know, so you already took that leadership role. So we ask that you continue to portray that, um, as you come here every, every meeting and as you leave here every meeting. And, um, I just, I do truly appreciate each and every one of you. I appreciate your thoughts and your ideas and your opinions. And we just want to keep it that way, remaining that we, we do appreciate each other. So that was all for what I had to say tonight. Are you shutting yours off or you want to say something else? Okay. All right, so. Future meetings, June eleventh, twenty fifth, twenty fifth that we just said. I do want to reiterate, we have the retirement and recognition, five thirty PM, June eleventh. I'll probably say more about Katie's retirement then, um, as well as June twenty-fifth, although there is an article coming out. Is it out already? How come you get a copy and I don't? I guess so. Um, I was asked for a comment for Katie and I tell you, she did not twist my arm on anything in there. And she did not bribe me with anything either, so. Without objection, I declare this meeting adjourned at eight fifty-eight PM. Thank you.